Next item, please.
Next item is special reports. We have a career and technical education update by Mr. John Byerol. Did I say that right?
Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
That's a rarity.
Thank you. Byerol.
Hi, Superintendent Maleko, members of the board. You know, I'm looking around and I see all these new faces and I realize it was about time I came and did this anyway. So I've brought for you today a brief, really brief, kind of update on where we are with career and technical education here in Dearborn. Right, so I started out, I sent in my slide deck last week, and you all know we had a snow day last week. I don't know if you know for us teachers what snow days do, they throw everything into chaos. So this is not a student, although she looks like one. This is our culinary arts teacher, Karen Pokrivki. I did ask her to come along because she is one of the absolutely excellent professionals I work with every day, and I wanted to publicly recognize her for the amazing work she does with our students, preparing them in culinary arts, but also for hospitality and tourism careers, which I keep finding out is our second biggest employer in the region behind the auto industry. So sometimes that gets overlooked. I think I can turn, right? February is Career and Technical Education Month, both nationally and the state government. Whitmer has signed this, and this is where we celebrate those programs and prepare our kids for life after high school. And we always say it's not, like we used to think in the 1950s, some kids went to college, some went into careers. It's now college and career ready because all students are going to be lifelong learners. So what is career and technical education? This is what I share in a much larger format with our students all the time. They are classes that beyond the rigorous curriculum that all schools have, also include hands-on skill training, laboratory training. We run a school restaurant, Ellie's Eatery, at the Michael Berry Career Center, where students handle all aspects of the restaurant. Work-based learning, where they get out and engage with members of the local community, finding out what it's going to be like after they're in high school and what that job's going to entail. Career and technical student organizations, clubs that allow those students opportunities for student leadership, competition, scholarships. They're built into our classes, they're not necessarily after-school clubs, like at a traditional high school or in a traditional classroom. Student certifications, independent, third-party, external verification of what they've learned. I'm going to talk about this more in a minute, but it's our M-Step, or our SAT, or our PSAT. How we measure success is when kids leave our program, do they have something in hand they can take to our local workforce that says, hey, hire me? And then there is college credit available for students, both through our articulation agreements with Henry Ford Community College, our partner, and also statewide. We're also exploring some dual enrollment options rolled into our career and technical education. So these are the 11 programs we offer currently. As you can see, culinary arts and hospitality, we have a business academy, preparing kids for business career, allied health, pre-education, trying to grow our own teachers, criminal justice and law careers, police officers and lawyers. And then underneath automotive technology, computer programming, construction trade, cybersecurity and IT, digital design, welding. You'll notice three of them I highlighted in red. Auto is great if you go to Edsel Ford in Fortson. You no longer have an auto program at Dearborn High. Those students can go to the other high schools and take it, however, they don't in practice. It's a little weird being the one Dearborn kid at Edsel, and there may not be room for them. Same with construction trades, we unfortunately lost our teacher at Edsel that's not available there. I had a student just share with me this week, he's completed two years of health science classes at Michael Berry, loves it, has a great time, she's starting an electrician apprenticeship. She didn't have a construction trades program. She loved allied health, she didn't waste her time, she had a great experience. But it does point out a need. Same with welding, as far as a state-approved program is only at Edsel Ford. I wanted to recognize this guy too, Mr. Algarabli over at Fortson. He is our automotive teacher, doing a absolutely fantastic job. We threw the world at him. He was a technician, we hired him to be a teacher, and he had to figure that out on the fly. And, at the same time, he had to do his ASE five-year recertification. And, he just got audited by the Department of Ed to make sure he was in compliance with all of his program. Handled it with a smile, and he brings pizza to the meetings, so amazing. But he has this wall of fame, and to me, this is everything. Remember I said certifications are our PSAT? We're training kids through a three-year program to go out and get jobs as auto mechanics at local dealers, independent service shops, you know, oil change places, belt tire, you name it. We're pumping out the mechanics of the future. Tremendous job demand, very high paying. Those are all of the students who have passed the Michigan Mechanics License Exam in his classes here, or their ASE certification. So if you can look on that, I was telling him, one of my friends says, that's the pudding, because that's where you find the proof. He's doing what he needs to do, because his kids have those licenses, they can walk in the dealer, when they turn 17 now, and get jobs. High-paying jobs, right out of high school, no college debt. So Mr. Algarabli, amazing. If you get a chance to go see his shop, I encourage you to do it. He is doing fantastic things over at Fortson High School. I saw this at a conference I was just at, this apprenticeship program wall that they put together. I'm looking at getting one of these actually custom for Dearborn with our local trades unions, but these are the 16 statewide trade unions that offer apprenticeships. And we are not sending kids into these. We just aren't. We know that, there's a huge demand, we know that a lot of our students will end up in the trades, but we're not highlighting this. So again, I pointed out our construction trades program, it depends what school you're at. It is definitely something, I think on a strategic level, we're looking at is, how do we bolster the trades and, you know, whatever? Our last, we have a partnership advisory meeting that talks about career tech ed programs, the Michael Berry Center twice a year. And, you know, the last meeting, our IBEW, International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, stood up and said, hey, my apprentices are making $54 an hour to start. That's $108,000 a year with no overtime. And you could have heard a pin drop in there. Parents, other professions, whatever, there are great careers out there. And another initiative we did, as I said, sorry, I'm going to go kind of chaotically fast. I did host a trip to Nashville, which is a national model of career tech ed education. They like to say their why was different than ours. They had a 44% graduation rate. We're not Nashville, Nashville's not Dearborn. But they do have every single kid, I think a little over 200,000 kids, every kid does a three-year career program, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. And so we went to see how they do that. Not so much so that we could just steal that from Dearborn, but so we could look at what they do, because I will tell you from talking to kids there, I think if they ever tried to get rid of this, it wouldn't be the teachers and the parents complaining, it would be the students. The students love this, they can't see any other way to do it. We kind of came out of that looking at two things. They have a really robust partnership with the local tourism bureau, Chamber of Commerce, city government, because they knew that those high school kids were the workers of the future and their economy depended on it. And then they have a ninth-grade academy. I said they took classes in 10, 11, 12. They have a dedicated ninth-grade class all year where kids kind of figure out what they're going to do in 10, 11, and 12. It sort of aligns to what we do with the Michigan Career Guidance Model, and we looked at it. So these are very initial baby steps, but you'll see, I took the principals of the three high schools, a graduation interventionist, one of our assistant principals. And we're in the process of sort of digesting this and looking to see if out of that we can come up with some ideas for things to do in Dearborn. To sort of shadow some of the things they do, because again, it's an excellent program. If any of you want to meet with me, not at a board meeting and discuss, because it's a long discussion, but we can, anytime you want to discuss this. I'm very passionate about some of this stuff. I thought also while we're focusing on positive, I would focus on our funding, how we support these programs. The first things are, every year, always, we're funded by federal and state funds. You know, our Perkins grant funds mostly salaries for leadership and some reporting. And then that Section 61A state funding has been great. We did take a huge hit in that state funding this year, about 34% we lost, partly through declining enrollment, partly through the state not propping it up with ESAR funds anymore. And partly through, we have a lot of kids who start our programs where they get partial funding, and then they don't come back for the second year and generate the rest of that funding. So we're kind of working on that and dealing with that reality. I know that at our recent education conference, I talked to the curriculum leaders from all over the state, and they have written a letter to the State Board of Education and the governor, advocating for increased funding to sort of replace those funds that evaporated this year. On good news, thanks to a lot of people, Superintendent Maleko, Mayor Hamood, help me out, our state representative.
Yep, Farhat.
Farhat.
So they've been great to us. These grants keep showing up in the world of CTE that I kind of find out about, and they're like, Glenn's great, he's like, here's a check, spend it. Yeah, great, lovely.
And Senator Kamalary was helpful with that.
Yep, for sure. So we got last year a quarter million dollars, $250,000 for a cybersecurity program, which is up and running at the Michael Berry Center. It is running as an unfunded elective program this year because we have to go through the state approval process. It'll be funded next year. We're in that process. The cybersecurity lab that goes with it is nearing completion. Mark Andrews has been great working with me on that. Really looking forward to that, and actually kind of expanding out into a lot of interest in our IT program. Everything from the help desk, computer repair careers, all the way up through cybersecurity, been great. There is a two-and-a-half million dollar skilled trades grant floating around out there. I don't think I can really talk about much, because I don't think really anything exists other than there are some architects exploring ideas about consolidating our automotive and trades program to sort of deal with that equity of access issue. What could we do so that all kids could get training in the trades? All kids can partake in those excellent automotive programs. So that's kind of, I think, where we're at with that. And I'm sure Mark and I will talk to you as that progresses, because for every one of those dollars, as you know, there's a community meeting and a recommendation and a vote that has to happen. That's how grant money works. We also, through Chastity Townsend, the Education Foundation, got a grant from Ford. As part of that, getting kids interested in the skilled trades, we just got a $20,000 grant to buy a robot for the skilled trades program. I actually ordered that today, finally, and that's in the process. And then we are exploring options at our early middle college, the Henry Ford Early College, the Collegiate Academy, to see whether, well, we can generate CTE funding for those programs. The question always has been, was that juice worth the squeeze? Would it cost us more to put that in place than we would generate in funding and return? But we're at least looking at it going forward. And then, I think I have one more, just sort of in general things I can share with you. We've been, I talked about this a little bit, thinking about this idea of what does it mean to be a high school graduate in Dearborn? We have the academies at Fortson a little bit more developed than Dearborn High and Edsel, but a focus on a career-centric high school education, not maybe structured like Nashville where you're locked into taking six classes. More like, as long as you have a plan, it's okay, just don't graduate majoring in whatever, fit your schedule, right? We want to have kids to take classes that mean something and build up to something. We are always reviewing our curriculum, so we have some things that have come from the state recently, allowing our career tech ed kids, like maybe a kid in automotive, to not take one of his science classes, or one of his world language classes, or Algebra II, because they just don't need that going forward. And therefore, opening up more chances for them to take other classes to improve their skills, or take classes more aligned to their future plan. We are looking likewise to realign our business curriculum. We have a great business curriculum. We just know that 40% of our kids are going to end up in a business career, and only about 5% of our kids get into our business program, and we're trying to make things a little smoother and more logical for them. We're thinking it's more a marketing program problem on our end than anything else. We are looking at that pre-trades model we have now. Right now, we've built it strictly off the state standards, and it leads towards a carpentry apprenticeship, but only carpentry. As we know, there are many, many, many trades in construction, there are also manufacturing trades. So we're looking at something that will start as early as ninth or 10th grade and get kids exposure to those careers. Think back to that apprenticeship wall slide I showed you. Just making kids aware that after high school, it doesn't necessarily have to be college and college debt, that there are other options, and that yes, you can do this, and yes, you can make a living at it. So we're looking at a class, think of it as kind of an exploratory maker space, do things with your hand, figure out that, hey, yeah, I can do this stuff, kind of stuff. So that's in the process of going through curriculum right now. And then we're in the very basic stages of talking about, if we did some kind of Nashville-style ninth-grade career exploration, what would that look like? Who would teach it? How do we fit it in the schedule? What kind of credit could it count for? Again, that's something if you're interested in, get ahold of me offline. We're still at the talk it through, we're not even at the have the first meeting stage yet, but it is definitely something that's out there, and we've been talking about. How do we get kids educated to where they can advocate for themselves and make better choices in their electives they go through? Cool, I think that's my last slide. I was going to say, the one thing I didn't get to put in here, our open house is coming up March 12, 5:00 to 6:30, with a meeting beforehand, 4:00 to 5:00 for our community partners. I will give you all personally hand-delivered invitation as soon as they're done. It is a great chance to come and learn about our programs. We have local colleges there, we have local employers that are talking about jobs. It's a real chance to reach out to the community. We get a lot of interested parents and students, even some middle school parents and students come by. Would love to see some of you there. So that's as fast as I can go, I feel like I'm out of breath because it's fast for me. I know there are questions, I saw some hands.
For sure. Trustee Barry.
Yes, John, I always enjoy listening to you.
Thank you.
I love your passion for our students and our district. I am so happy that things are going good. For my new colleagues on the board here, I strongly recommend visit, sit down with John. Very, very good things going on. But I have a question, but I'd like to give a plug to the restaurant. What days are we open and what hours?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Please.
I had every intention, I apologize. We are playing a pass potato of influenza in my beginning and afternoon kids last week when we had the downtime. So they took this week off, actually four of my students that were supposed to be here have been out for over a week. So you are here with me, I would normally have them here speaking. The restaurant is open every Wednesday and every Thursday. Of course, we will be shutting down for Ramadan, but we will be back up and going. We will be running this week, next week, and the following week. If you'd like to come and see us, we would love to have you there. We open up at 10:30 and we close at 12, but we do allow you to stay in the restaurant until around 1. We'll serve you until around 1, where my students have the opportunity to host you, cook the food for you. We serve Dr. Maleko quite a bit. It is a wonderful experience for the students and for I, who share our passion in culinary arts. And keep your eye open for us, March 10th and 11th, Pro Start. It is something that we participate in heavily as a culinary department. And my students will be competing in the Michigan Restaurant Association Pro Start Competition, which will be hosted out in Battle Creek. We compete against all local culinary schools statewide for CTE competition. And we try our hand at a $250,000 Culinary Arts and Management Scholarship Award. And so out of that two-day event, it is intense, where students compete in not just culinary arts, but table decorating, management, hotel, they have to market their product. They also get a chance to do pasta, which I have a couple teams doing that, cake decorating, quiz bowl. And of course, all of my kids, John had touched base on certification. My kids are all certified in serve-safe management, which is recognized by the National Restaurant Association, and all restaurants in Wayne County and most counties, you must have that in order to even run and operate a restaurant. And so my kids competing competition, obtaining those skills in a quiz bowl. So keep your eyes open for us. Hopefully this year we will take home a win. Plymouth Canton seems to always beat us, but this year is our year. So keep your eyes open for us.
Go.
Thank you. Trustee Zahra.
What's your name again, ma'am?
My name is Chef Karen Pokrivki.
How long you been with this program?
I have been in the district for 20 years. So I started at Henry Ford Community College as a culinary instructor at the college level first. I was there for 10 years. I was wonderfully blessed with this opportunity when Eleanor Shepherd retired in 2016, and to which I took over her position, and I've been with them since 2016. But in the district, overall with Dearborn, I've been here since 2008.
And how many students are you currently teaching?
So I have 22 first year, and I have 11 second year. And then I usually do have some third year, not this year, but I do have them carry over, and it is a fun experience for them. My second year are the ones who run my restaurant program. So the more that I have returned, the better it is for us. It's always a great problem to have too many kids in culinary arts.
For sure.
And how many people am I allowed to bring to lunch?
You are allowed to bring as many as you would love, we would love to have you.
Is it like a different menu every week, or?
So we rotate our menu monthly. So I do teach children cuisine from around the world, and so every month we do change that.
Okay, can't wait.
A phenomenal cook, you got to get there.
Great food, reasonable prices.
I invite you to lunch.
I used to meet Trustee McDonald, I've heard of his lunches.
And everything is halal, so please do join us.
Yeah, wonderful.
Sir Byerol, I have a question about the cybersecurity.
Yes.
Students are enrolled, and you said funded versus...
So what we run are state-approved CTE programs that generate funds through Perkins and that 61A. There's a, it's a two-year approval process. So we got this grant kind of dropped on us last year and said, we didn't want to, and especially because it's a three-year program, we didn't want to wait and then get kids in on the ground floor. So we just enrolled kids in the first class this year, they're taking the certifications, whatever. We're just funding it out of building funds instead of out of CTE funds. We will put in that intent-to-apply letter coming up, March 11, I think is the date. The state will start working that approval. Next year, we'll run the program again. Somewhere during the year, they'll give us the approval, and they will allow us to backdate that funding to the beginning of next school year. So we're on track to be a fully-funded program next year with it. And actually, through talking to the state, we're actually going to apply as three separate programs. So the first year, second and third year will all be a separate funding stream, because we realize they align to multiple career paths. Like I said, information technology, you know, tech support, help desk, computer repair, the second year into network and management, the third year into the actual cybersecurity, which is sort of the natural progression of skills. Bob Addy and his department have been amazing helping us. It's pretty complicated, and they've been helping us really figure things out.
That's great. So how many students were enrolled?
We have, we have some kids who came through the DCMST track, actually taken the third-year advanced certificate this year. I think there's 14 of them or 15. And then we have two small sections of 16, 17, so a little over 30, first-year kids. And tremendous interest for next year, just, I'm in the process of talking to kids, and it's one of the more popular things. I think especially because we've built it with off-ramps. If they get in it and they're not going to get all the way to that third year, there's definitely well-paying and well-skilled career branches that come off that, so. And as we do those advisory committee meetings, if you know people in that sphere in information technology and cybersecurity, reach out to me, we're putting our advisory committee together. We need probably 20 local employers to advise us in that field. I got some names, but I'll always take...
Dr. Maleko.
I just got to also support, Chef Karen does a great job with her students. And we've had our advisory council come, and it's really great to see, and it's fantastic food. So I'll be, I'll be back.
I appreciate it.
And Dr. Byerol, I know just finding funding, managing it is very important. Next month, we're going to have Ms. M. Bereko, who's here, present with Ms. Sura on all the grants that we're finding. Our team is working hard, it's the position that we have to coordinate it, to find alternative funding. Mr. Martin was instrumental, Adam Martin as well, getting the CTE. When I talked, actually Mayor Hamood, and then Senator Santana, it was a lot of work that went into trying to getting the funds. And once I said it may be available, I think they got the application ready within two weeks, and it was in and ready to go. We've also applied, and we haven't heard back, we don't know what's going on nationally now with all the changes. But Congresswoman Tlaib was supporting us with some federal grants that we wrote as well for similar programs. So we're hopeful, but we know now that there's been some, kind of put stop on some of those funding sources. So just wanted to commend the work you guys do, thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Dr. Maleko. Keep asking, like, I make it sound like it's a lot of work, but I love the work. So just keep asking for money, I'll keep spending it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Maleko.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
The next item is citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action, who are signed in by 7:10 PM or 10 minutes after we start our meeting, by submitting a blue card to the board secretary, may speak at this time. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. There is a three-minute time limit on comments made to the board. And our first speaker is Robert Kivaglik, I'm not saying that right. How do you say it?
Shivali.
Say it again?
Shivali.
Shivalia? Okay, our first speaker is Robert Shivalia, who will speak to us on the selected cancellation of after-school activities on days schools are closed for weather.
Thank you very much. Good evening, my name is Robert Shivalia, and I am representing the performing arts students and parents at Dearborn High School. This past Wednesday, the district made the decision to close school on Thursday due to the forthcoming weather. Wednesday night was opening night for the student-directed scenes at Dearborn High School. This is a three-night performance in a very intimate setting with 100 people in attendance. As the students, teachers, and adult volunteers prepared for opening night, the DHS principal was leaving the office. We were informed that Thursday's performance was canceled because there would be too many people in the building. A discussion about the audience size was held. The principal then assured us that, "I will contact the superintendent and get back to you," thus implying that the decision was to be made by the superintendent. Throughout Thursday, the teacher contacted the principal, and the simple answer is there was no response from the superintendent. As rule followers, we canceled the performance, resulting in the loss of at least $600 in revenue. I will not go through all the financial items because this is a secondary issue. The primary issue is why were the performing arts students denied the opportunity to perform while the athletic students were allowed to compete? Not only did the district wrestling match occur, but DHS also hosted a swim meet. The bowling took a bus to an away event. The basketball teams and cheerleaders were allowed to practice. The message that was received by these students was not students first. It was performing arts students don't matter. Performances are performances, whether it's a wrestling match, a swim meet, or a theatrical performance. All students must be treated as equal. Furthermore, other performing arts students had after-school rehearsals scheduled for vocal music and instrumental solo ensemble held this past weekend. Why were their practices forced to be canceled when basketball and cheerleading practices were allowed to continue? The performing arts students put a tremendous amount of work and practice into their activities, no different than our athletic students. Yet the decision to treat the performing arts students to be less than that of our athletic students. The seniors in the performing arts at Dearborn High have already received more than $1 million in scholarship offers for their onstage talent. This does not include academic or merit-based scholarships or financial need scholarships. Therefore, I have a few requests. Please tell us who is responsible for this decision. Please inform us of the decision-making process that is used to determine which events and practices are allowed to continue when school is canceled. And the final request is for the superintendent, the DHS principal, and any members of the school board to attend a meeting with the performing arts students at Dearborn High, where you can provide those answers to them as you need to justify your actions to them, not to me or the other parents here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Maleko, do you have a response?
First thing I would just say is, we never want to close school or any events, to be honest. You know, but we have to for safety. And I made the call to shut down, basically, the entire district gets shut down. And the protocol is that we shut down all activities. There are some exceptions that go through, that come up the ranks to Ms. Ali Bazey in the athletic department if there's competitions with other schools, and sometimes there's exceptions made. But generally, everything is shut down. We do plan to talk about this at cabinet, to see how we'll do this moving forward. As far as me responding, I did get an email from a student in the evening. It was late, it wasn't, you know, on a day that we closed, and I did respond to one student. I don't know if anyone else tried to contact me, but I did respond to that student about 8:00. I saw the email about 8:00 o'clock.
Can you comment if Ms., if the principal contacted you? Has she informed us that she would do?
I don't recall if I got a contact on that from the principal.
Thank you.
At this time, I have to think about that, but I talked to her on a few different issues, so. But anyway, we don't want to cancel school, but we have to for safety. And I can assure you, we're not...
Totally agree with the reason.
We are not, we're not looking to center out arts in any way. Basically, events were canceled throughout the district, and some exceptions are made, especially when other... And a lot of times as superintendents, we talk and we look at competitions that are occurring, and sometimes we... And sometimes we agree that all events, including athletics or whatever it may be, and sometimes we allow an exception when districts are playing each other or there's final tournaments. I had no knowledge up until that, what you're saying, until I got the, that email, so. But we're definitely not looking to center out the arts, so.
We definitely want to review the process as far as what to close when we have, because those events are voluntary.
Yeah, and generally.
Parents and students, they volunteer, students volunteer to be on those extracurricular activities.
Same as they do for sporting events as well.
So, we, like I said, we do not have, we generally shut everything down because we don't have staff in buildings. That's the issue. When everything's shut down, we do have engineers that will come in on a limited basis, but it's not. But we can talk about it in cabinet. In fact, Ms. Ali Bazey asked me to come up with kind of a consistent system. But generally, when we're shut down per the contract and everything, everything gets shut down. There's a few exceptions that can be made through the athletics and they have to get special permission.
So, it only, it only applies to athletics? Is that what you're saying? Special.
I, you know, there could be other events that we've approved in the past. I don't recall specifically. But generally, the requests will come in and there'll be exceptions made when it's told that this event, a lot of times it happens to be sports. I'm not sure if we've had it with the arts. I do think we did allow the, at last year, if I recall, one day, there was a performance at Dearborn High in the evening. It was a performance that was put on and I think we allowed it. Mr. Martin, I don't know if you recall that or Ms. Farage.
For which event? What time of year?
I, I just recall last year this happening. So, and again, I don't want to keep getting in a back and forth, but we can get back to you. If you, if we got your information and we can get that protocol.
Let's get the parents' information. Trustee Barry, you had a question?
According to our agenda, I mean, board follow-up is supposed to be later. But since we're already having a discussion, I mean, was there any events that took place in the building that night?
Yes.
I would have to get back to you on what, Adam, you.
What I'm hearing, what I'm hearing you say is that we made exceptions. And I also heard you say that we don't know if there was enough people to keep the school open. How does that?
Well, it's, it's whether or not we have engineers in the building to run the building, that's the issue.
Well, I mean, if there's a basketball game going.
Then there would be.
There has to be. Not would be, there has to be.
Correct. Correct.
I mean, yeah, please look into that and let us know.
Yeah, we can, for sure.
There was any other events. Somebody, I mean, if there was any other events, something happened and yes, students shouldn't feel, you know, the basketball players shouldn't feel like the wrestlers are more important and the performing arts.
We can discuss.
Students first, everybody should be equal.
Trustee Zar, and then we'll get Mr. Martin to comment.
I want to thank you and all the parents who support their kids in performing arts. I'm a performing artist, so this stuff hits very personal and deeply to me. I don't think anybody, and here's, here's, and this is why sometimes it's, we don't, we don't see it. I don't think anybody thinks that the administration singles out performing arts to cancel, right? But it's more about not thinking about it in the same way we think about everything else. It's more about maybe having a blind spot when it comes to preserving the performing arts. And so, I would just ask everybody to have a, more of a eye towards that. I don't think anyone thinks that, you know, we, you know, somebody made a conscious decision. Everyone else can do something that these guys can't. But I think it's more about, sometimes we just don't think about it. And the, the truth is, the performing arts develop, and I know we all believe this, but the performing arts and the arts in general develop as much skills in our young people as any sporting event or anything else that kids do. And so, I just want you guys to know that I'll always be here for you if you need me. And, you know, again, as an artist, I understand how deeply personal and how important this is to all of you. So, thank you for everything you do.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah, my understanding on Thursday, it was Thursday, correct?
Yes.
That Dearborn High was hosting the MHSAA Wrestling Meet with multiple teams there. So, I think you, those of you that know athletics, understand the MHSAA, if you move off, there's other scheduling issues. My understanding was that was the, the event that kind of precipitated some of the others. I did want to clarify, since Ms. Farage is, she wasn't working that day. Mr. Brill did reach out to me and her and I had a lengthy conversation. To Dr. Maliko's point, so, she was speaking of me, if you spoke with her, in terms of who she was talking to. And I did consult with Ms. Ali Bazey and that's where we're at in terms of how the decision was made. I think going forward, like Dr. Maliko said, we'll explore what our process is in terms of what does and doesn't happen in the building. But to Trustee Zar's point, we apologize, validate your feelings, that, we apologize.
Can we get something for the kids, for the students that were displaced essentially?
So, I, I certainly think Mr. Brill and myself can, can work on that for sure.
That would be appreciated.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Trustee Petlicov?
Well, since you're going to be having this conversation with cabinet and since we see that there seems to be a need to have guidelines that are pretty consistent across the board for how we approach when we have these exceptional weather events or any other events, I think we should also, when we develop the guidelines, have bullet points, be very clear and have something available in each building so that when something occurs, we can have an explanation that, you know, we can hand to the parents and to, and to the students that, that defines why this is occurring and what the processes will be. So that they understand. I understand that if it's an athletic event that has multiple schools involved and they think that they can go ahead, that, that's why they wanted to stay committed to it as opposed to a, a single school-building event. But then we have to explain it and we have to be able to justify it. And it has to be consistent across the district at all of our buildings.
Well, if I could just add, so, and I've been promoting the arts, I'm just going to say, because you guys all know, I've been on the committee with the music and everything. And I go to the art performances, it, nothing was done intentionally. Here's the issue with school closures, is every situation is different. So, you might have one day where the morning is a hazard, but in the evening, in the evening, it clears up. But you've also had situations where the day before you close, you actually have to cancel all activities because you're dealing with snow or ice. So, the one problem with a, we have to have a consistent system, yes, with flexibility. Because every, and I've been doing this now for 10 years. And I'm going to tell you, every time we've had to close, it's under different circumstances, different parameters. And so, the, that's why as superintendents in Wayne County, we do discuss. Sometimes everybody just agrees, it's going to be very dangerous. We have the meteorologists in the meeting with me. That's where we get the scientific data and we all may just agree, there's not going to be anything. We're not running any athletics. We do it kind of jointly to, you know, for safety. But I, we've heard you and I appreciate it. And I can assure you, nothing was done intentionally. You know, we, we value all the students. We have a lot of events and we're just going to have to come up with maybe protocols on top of, with some flexibility for unique circumstances during these variety of emergencies since I, I've had to close school over the last 10 years.
Trustee Barry?
Just real quick, I'm sorry, President Moszib. Trustee Zar, this board has always supported, I mean, the arts program, this music, I mean, performing arts. It's always, I'm very proud of that and so has the administration. So, Mr. Martin, wherever you are, thank you. Thank you for acknowledging what happened. Let's move forward. The only thing I can say is, yes, there should be flexibility, but either the building is open or it's closed. Keep that in mind when you're talking to your cabinet.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we still have a speaker?
Yes, this one was submitted, I read this one, right? This is from Mary Lane, who says, "I attended the Etzel Ford production of Macbeth on December 6, 2024, and thought all the students and staffs involved did a really excellent job with a challenging work. I would like to extend my congratulations and recommend community members that they patronize events at the schools and HFC."
Thank you. Next item, please.
The next items are. Yeah, action items. First item is special consideration of an action items. First, are there any agenda items on this agenda which board members or the superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motion below.
I believe we have, do we have to single out?
Fill in a name, yes, so, pull that one.
Do we have to pull that as an individual motion?
Well, no.
Well, let's do that. Let's.
To, to fill in the name, you would have to pull, because otherwise you're going to make a motion for the whole.
Yeah, let's take 16, single that out. So, we'll do 1, 2.
With the exception of?
With the supplement, we have supplementals too. So, 1, 2, 19 with the exception of 16. So, we'll vote on 16 separately.
Which one is 16?
16 is the MASB Board of Directors election, where we will have to fill in.
Fill in the blank.
Yeah.
I do have a question before we vote, so that I don't ask for an exception. Could I do that?
We, we still don't have any motions.
Right.
We're just asking right now.
Trustee Zar?
Trustee Zar is going to read it?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. So, at the, so you want me to read, sorry? At this time, the secretary will call for a single motion to approve all of the actions, items on this agenda, with the exception of any items which have just been excluded from this motion by board member request.
Okay, so now you have to say, move the action items numbered 1 through 19 with the exception?
Of 16?
Yes.
Okay, so the recommended action here will be, we move that action items numbered 1 through 19?
Correct.
Is that correct? Be approved as recommended, yes, as recommended in this agenda with the exception of item 16.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, so motion moved by Trustee Barry, supported by Trustee Petlicov. Any discussion on any of the items or questions?
Now is your time to question.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, so there's a couple items and they kind of focus on Henry Ford and building renovation. And they talk about two buildings.
Which item?
Yeah, number.
Which number? Just bear with me a second.
Number nine.
Yeah. So.
Number nine?
Yeah, I think it's nine. There's nine.
With the?
There's, oh, sorry, there's number seven and there's nine.
Will these be the same, the same question or do you want to take each one separate?
Each one. So, so, number seven talks about renovation of the two buildings. Are we talking about the same buildings for those two items for number seven?
So, number seven includes multiple improvements. Part of the scope of work for Clark that manages the Early College. We're also looking at several other projects that were mentioned earlier tonight at the Michael Berry Center that the architects are working on. And there's also some mechanical improvements that we're working on. We also have the green schoolyards.
But is it the new, the two new buildings that we're renovating is number seven deals with the two new buildings?
For the construction management portion, correct. That'd be a portion of their, their scope of work.
And number nine?
Number nine is to expand the Early College. Right now, we have work that's ongoing. It was previously approved and ongoing for the South Building. This is to expand that scope of work into the West Building.
And go back, sorry, to number seven, it said there was a 2, 12 million 500 budget for full scope? Is that accurate, the 12?
So, correct, this is just estimated. We were still waiting on some funding to come for some of these projects. However, our architects are working on the full scope, especially at the Michael Berry Center. If we can get additional funding and do more for the Michael Berry, then we would probably have to revise Clark's contract later on down the road. This is just for the end of the 2025. So, we have $2.5 million allocated for the Michael Berry project right now. We anticipate to get more and if we can, then we'll move their services. So, this is up to that amount, depending on how much funding we have. We're anticipating on getting.
Well, the reason I ask is said increase by 1 million to 5 million 800,000. But the, the budget is 12 million.
Yeah, just to give a little background of the whole thing, whenever we do a construction project, we're required to have an architect by law. So, you'll see that we're using French and IDS for architectural services. I believe that will happen in March, that we'll bring those forward. In addition, we have a construction manager. The construction manager helps us lead and operate the building and watch over the, the trades that actually do the work. The third part is actually the trades. So, number, I think, eight or nine, which one is the trade?
Nine, I think.
Nine is the trade. So, that's to actually the plumber, the mechanic, HVAC. Construction manager is helping us oversee that because we don't have enough staff, on our own staff, to be able to run it. And so, the other one you're looking at is the construction manager. So, there's three pieces for every construction. So, even if they might name the same building, there's certain components that they work with.
So, seven is paying the construction manager?
Correct, so we're expanding the scope from the original project from the South Building and the Etzel Projects. It's all one contract. We're expanding it, amending it to include now the West Building at Henry Ford College.
Okay, and, and the reason I ask is it said 12 million 5, but we're increasing it by 1 million to 5 million. So, it just didn't make sense that if we're still within scope of the 12, 5 million, why do we need to?
Well, part of the, actually, number eight, keeping that right, eight, nine, nine. Nine is expanding the scope of work. So, that's roughly about 3.6 million? 3.6 million, so a part of that. The other part is what Dr. Barrow was up here before on the Vocaad expansion. So, their CM is crossing several different, different construction programs, but it's all one contract. So, that's why the number is larger.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Can we have a roll call for the motion, please?
Yep. Trustee Al Jehmi?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Dambrosio?
Yes.
Trustee Petlicov?
Yes.
Trustee Watts?
Yes.
Trustee Zar, yes? President Moszib?
Yes, thank you. Now, we go to 19? Or, I'm sorry.
Oh, 16.
16. So, you can read just the recommended action, Mr. Secretary.
So, now we're looking for a motion to move that action item 60, oh. I'm new.
You're fine.
I just got here. Thank you, Pam.
Just remember, I did ask if you wanted me to highlight.
Okay, got it. So, for item number 16, correct?
Yes.
For item 16, we, the recommended action here, do you want me to read the background information? Do I need to do that? Just the recommended action. The recommended action here is move that the Dearborn Board of Education cast its vote.
For blank.
For?
Blank, well, well then, we'll fill it in.
Okay, got it.
I know.
Move that the Dearborn Board of Education cast its vote for blank as candidate for the MASB Board of Directors position for Region 8, Group 6, one seat for a three-year term.
Trustee Petlicov?
Okay, I did the research in my homework on all of the nominees.
So, let's get a move and a support first and then we can.
Well, I wanted to put the name in, that's what I was doing.
You have to put the name in.
Oh, you want to complete the question?
Sure.
Yeah. I'm just saying, no, I did the research and I would like to select Randall Meisner from Fitzgerald Public Schools.
What school, what school district, I'm sorry?
Well, it's Fitzgerald Public Schools, but that's in Warren, Michigan.
So, that would be from also McComb, correct?
Yeah, there was only two Wayne County.
Anybody read the bios, the emails that we've received from other candidates that they want to bring another name forward?
Thank you for doing the homework. Now, Hamer, you read, do we read the, the motion?
Yes, Randall Meisner, is that what you said?
Randall Meisner.
Randall Meisner, okay. Move that the Dearborn Board of Education cast its vote for Randall Meisner as candidate for the MASB Board of Directors position for Region 8, Group 6, one seat for a three-year term.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Trustee Barry, supported by Trustee Watts. Any objections to the motion? Can we attach a unanimous roll?
No, it can be unanimous.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Next item, please.
Inside. Inside the last page.
Yes, I remember you showed this to me. Okay, summary of agenda action items. Number one, approval of warrants. Number two, approval of an award to AMCOM. Number three, approval of an award to Access. Number four, approval of an award to Hop Skip Drive Incorporated. Numbers five through eight, approval of change orders. Number nine, approval of an award to Crisman, Crisman Constructors, Turner Brooks, Conchi Painting LLC, Shock Brothers, Great Lakes Hotel Supply, Covenant Environmental, Great Lakes Power and Lighting, and Bren Call Constructors, Constructors per Board Report 24-89. Ten through thirteen, approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items for P through 12. Fourteen, approval of financial statement. Fifteen, approval of 2025 January graduates per Board Report 24-95. Sixteen, approval of 2025 MASB Board of Directors election, and seventeen, approval of donations. Oh, sorry. Okay, eighteen, appointment of assistant principal to Woodworth Medical School, or Middle School, I wish it was a medical school, not yet, Woodworth Middle School, and number nineteen, appointment of special education coordinator.
Dr. Maleko, you want to make some announcements based on the-
Yes, I'd like to call up first Mr. Douglas Ratcliffe. He's been acting as the interim principal, now we're making it official. Let's give him a big round of applause and welcome him to the podium.
Thank you. I just quickly want to thank Principal Jabriel, Principal Rayback, and then Mr. Adam Martin for investing in time in me and into my career. And I want to thank the board and Dr. Maleko for the opportunity, and I look forward to continuing the work that I've been doing at Woodworth, working with our students in Dearborn Public Schools. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
And next, Ms. Carrie Schoolmaster. She, again, she was acting as interim, and she is now a permanent position as an administrator. So let's congratulate her and welcome her to the podium. I've known her for many years, going back to teaching time at Salina.
Twenty-five years ago, I picked up from college and moved to Dearborn, not knowing anything more than Greenfield Village, but in the past 25 years, I've been able to work with some amazing educators and leaders, and most of all, I've been able to make Dearborn